It is 6:32 and I call this meeting to order. It is February the first, 2022. And we will start with the roll call. Mayor Pro Tem Villa Logos.
Here.
Councilmember Bunker.
Here.
Councilmember Shell Allen.
Here.
Councilmember McClabb.
Here.
Councilmember Clinton.
Here.
And I'm Mayor Clay. If you would all rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now to the Texas flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
And if you'd remain standing for the invocation, please.
Dear gracious heavenly father, Lord God, we are just very grateful for your grace and your kindness to our little city of Martindale. Lord God, as we go forward and we are governing this city, we just ask for your help and your guidance and just to be with each and every one of us. Lord, we are just very grateful to be living here in the United States of America. Heavenly father, we just thank you and we just ask for your guidance in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, very first thing is going to be a report from our audit company. And I believe they are going to be on Zoom. Everybody's having trouble with COVID right now. So let's see if we can get them.
Hi, everyone. I'm Beth Packer and I'm with Haney and Company. Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, wonderful. Is, would I be able to share my screen? I have a copy of the report I'd like to share with everyone.
I am working on that momentarily.
Sure, okay.
Hey, would you do it now?
Uh, let's see. It says I cannot share until, while the other participant is sharing.
Let me stop sharing mine.
Okay.
There we go.
So is that working now?
One second while I move this word to council to see. There we go.
Okay. Okay, so is that viewable now?
One second, seems like I've been.
Sorry, no rush.
There you go.
Okay.
Okay, we're good now.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much. All right, well, my name is Beth Packer and I'm a CPA with Haney and Company, which is the city's audit firm. This year, we were contracted to do the financial audit for fiscal year 2021. Right, and I'm going to first start by going to the audit report here. Okay, so when the city has a financial statement audit, we're not only just looking at the financial statements themselves, but we're also looking at internal controls. So the first report we issue is based on the financial statements. And in years prior, the opinion used to be kind of buried in the report, but standards have kind of updated that. And now we kind of cut to the chase. We actually put the opinion at the very beginning. That way you're not having to dig for the information. So overall, while performing the financial statement, an audit of the financial statements, Dwayne has been very instrumental in providing us information and being able to put together the whole picture to understand what the city has gone through for the past year and how they're faring. Overall, the city has an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, which is very favorable. It means that we didn't find any major issues related to the financial statements themselves. So kudos overall to the city and also to Dwayne, your accountant. He's really done a great job in making sure everything comes together. Yes, yes, yay, Dwayne, thank you. So this is the first report that comes in the financial statements, or I'm sorry, the audit report itself. This report just specifically addresses the financial statements themselves. At the end of the report here, I'm just going to jump around, so bear with me.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but did we get a copy of that so we could follow along or are we just following along on the screen?
I can send it now. It's 68 pages, though.
I would have, I would have kind of liked it just before, but it's kind of, yeah.
Ms., I'm sorry, Beth.
Yes.
You might zoom in a little bit.
Absolutely, yes, I would happily make that more viewable for everyone. Okay, is that large enough?
Put it again if you can.
Okay.
Maximize that. I think she should maximize her screen.
It's hard with the PDF.
Sorry, is that better?
Yeah, it's nice. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. All right. The second report here is the independent auditors' report regarding internal controls. So during the course of the audit, we have conversations with Dwayne and we do inquiries with certain members of council just to make sure, are there anything, is there anything that anyone is aware of that we should hone in on or that you know is broken, so to speak? Whether it's not operating as efficiently as it should. In those discussions, we were able to gain an understanding of how transactions are processed from start to finish. And based on that understanding, we did not find any issues with internal controls. So on the bottom of this page 59, we have a paragraph that addresses the internal controls. It says internal controls were assessed, where our consideration of internal control was for limited purpose described in the first paragraph. It's not designed to find every single problem, but it is for the purpose of finding major material weaknesses and significant deficiencies. And during the course of the audit, we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control that we would consider a material weakness. So I know it's a lot of verbiage, but long story short, Dwayne is doing a very good, fine job of making sure transactions are being processed properly from beginning to end. And there's not a break in those internal controls. Okay. All right, my next. So overall, for the financial statements, when we're looking at the actual meat and potatoes, the numbers of the city, the best place to go look is the management discussion and analysis. And that starts on page five of the report. It's right after the financial statement opinion letter. So starting on page five, this gives a nice synopsis of what all is going on with the city from one year to the next. How did we fare? How did we do good or did we do bad? This is probably the easiest section of the report to read because it gives you that, that nice summarized version of what's going on in the city. So I'm actually going to the statement. It's a condensed statement of net position. So this is the balance sheet of the city. So we're looking at our assets and any obligations that are owed. Overall, from one year to the next, for the governmental funds, this would be the general fund, the special revenue fund, and the, oh gosh. I'm sorry, there's a third fund. The name escapes me at the moment. This is all of the governmental type activities. And overall, the net position of the city increased by 319,000. So that's very favorable. You had an increase in the, overall, from one year to the next. And it's primarily due to your restricted assets. Monies are being set aside, for example, for future road repairs. It's like a rainy day fund. So those monies are being accumulated to make sure that there's funds in the future to cover future obligations. The other is the due to state obligation, which is included in this current liability segment. That has decreased due to just the regular remittances to the state to reduce that obligation. As for the business type activities, this would be your utility fund. Overall, for the utility fund, there was a reduction in net position from 1,361,000 down to 1,328,000. That's a reduction overall of $33,000. But that comes from depreciation on the capital assets. So that's actually a non-cash activity. And it's just the regular scheduled depreciation to reduce the useful life of those assets. So overall, it's not necessarily bad. It's more, you more so broke even when you look at it from a cash perspective. The next schedule we have is the statement of, the condensed statement of activities or changes in net position. This is like an income statement. Where we're looking at our revenues and expenses, our ins and outs throughout the year. Overall, in our governmental activities, we actually had an increase of about $200,000. And most of that is from operating grants. For the expenses, they were relatively flat from one year to the next. So no, no big changes there, which also contributed to the increase in the net position overall for the year. Right, for the business type activities or that utility fund, there was an increase in the charge for services. Very, very slight, that, that's to be expected. And the utility costs went down just slightly. This would be like payroll-related costs for that particular fund. And again, we see the slight reduction here included in this amount for the utility expenses is the depreciation we were talking about earlier. Okay. For a more detailed version of the financial statement, since these are condensed versions, the more detailed versions are further into the report. They actually start on page 14. So this is the more detailed version of that balance sheet we were initially looking at. And this is just a one-year view of both the governmental and the business type activities. Okay. All right. The statements continue from page 14 all the way through page 21. So this 14 through 21 gives a very detailed breakout of each of those respective funds and gives you those more micro details of each of the funds and what numbers are going where. The notes to the financial statements is just a more detailed description of some of those broken outlines. So for example, if you wanted to see more about capital assets and how those are treated and depreciated over time, that description is provided further into the report.
Excuse me, excuse me. It looks like the computer's about to turn off on its own.
Oh.
I don't have any control over this.
Oh, oh.
It'll automatically sign it out, stay close, I guess.
It might sign me out, so do we pause the meeting? Or is this on Zoom?
Jared, are you here?
What's the issue?
Yeah, the. The computer is trying to shut down by itself. It's trying to sign out.
Oh, no.
Shut down in two minutes. Shutdown will start Tuesday, February 1st at 6:40. No, wow.
Oh.
Well, it sounds like our IT administrator is doing a mandatory reset on that machine. If we do happen to lose connection in the room, everybody else should still be able to participate on Zoom. So you might not have the video feed, but you'll still have the audio feed.
Well, the issue is that this is the host computer for the Zoom meeting.
Oh.
If you can reassign somebody as a co-host and the meeting should be able to continue from there. So if you assign the meeting room phone as the co-host, you should be able to continue the meeting from there.
Phone or Dwayne?
Oh, to the spider here.
Okay, now I have a Zoom app on my computer and I got my computer here.
You should be able to use the conference room. It's, we typically log in on two different devices, one on the computer and one on the conference room. Or if you can, you can make my phone number the co-host. I'd have limited functionality, but at least keep the meeting live while the computer does restart.
I passed it to the spider here on, in the.
That should work.
So give me one second. I'm going to make Beth Packer co-host as well, just in case. Okay, so let me sign this thing out or let it wait, sign now, then maybe I could force restart it.
Did you get my Dwayne?
I don't know he was in the meeting.
As it goes through that process, we can just follow along on either the handouts or the PDF copies that were available.
Let me restart the computer. It's restarting, but I'm going to first restart it and then see if we get back on. Sorry for losing the momentum.
It's okay. I'm actually logging in also. If you'll make me a co-host.
I guess we'll have to call and make sure they don't do that.
It's never happened before, but it's unlucky.
I know.
Don't change it.
Yeah. Say it. 6:53, that's kind of funny.
If you remember, you can go.
If you guys want, we can probably continue the conversation unless we don't have the read aheads for everybody to review as we talk through it.
It's letting me log in now. I.
Okay. That should be quick.
So, oh, we have to mute it. Get your audio. Let me log in briefly and put up stuff again.
I was turning it up.
Mayor, can I make a suggestion? What we're doing is could we add like public comments? Is that possible or not? It'll be a while.
It shouldn't take me too long.
It shouldn't take.
Okay. Keep it on, you can sit closer now.
I'm keeping that mine on so I can see.
Yeah. Well, I have it actually.
Oh, you had it open.
Oh, came back up?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just got there. Didn't give you the option.
No, no, that kind of surprised me. So. Let me have your best screen.
I can see it.
Now. See if I can do this. Beth, can you hear us now?
Yeah, I got you.
Okay.
Yes, I can hear you.
All right, back on.
I think we're good to go.
Okay, all right, perfect. I just stood on the same section. Okay, well, really, I'm actually at a good stopping point. Are there any questions over the report that you'd like to have addressed?
White, do you have any concerns or anything? It looks all good to you, what you reviewed?
You pretty much reviewed most of it.
Are we good to go?
Yes, yes, sorry, sorry.
Oh, okay, I just wanted to make sure. I left enough time for questions.
Okay, yeah. Now, if we'd have gotten the report earlier, you may have gotten a few more questions. But yeah, it's kind of nice to study before we come to, you know, class.
Oh, I understand, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Beth, I have a question for you. How do we compare to other cities of this size with this audit? On average?
About average, I would say. I mean, you, in the past few years, I would say probably about three or four years ago, it wasn't looking so great. I think now, if you're looking at today's terms, you're more so on average now because you do have money set aside for those emergencies. You have monies, you know, actually restricted for the purpose that they're designed for. The liabilities are within a manageable condition, a manageable state. So I'd say you're actually, you're doing fairly well. I would say about on par.
Would you make any recommendations? What you, I mean, to improve or suggestions?
Uh, let's see. Continuing to build those restricted balances or even committed or assigned balances. For example, you know, if you have the intention to do road repairs in the very near future, to continue to make, to set funds aside for those occasions, making sure you have like a five-year asset replacement schedule would be something to consider implementing if you haven't already started doing so in fiscal year '22. And in that five-year replacement schedule, I would say, you know, consider looking at, you know, like your police vehicles, utility repairs that need to be addressed. The road repairs, I know that I just keep bringing that up. It's a, it's a quick and easy example. Possibly consider, and if it is possible, I understand, you know, there's economic restrictions, but, you know, consider paying an additional balance to the amount due to the state, if possible. I understand that may not be viable for many years. But I would say the five-year asset schedule would probably be a good recommendation to work on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Beth.
That's it? Okay.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone. And I'll just go ahead and return the screen. And I want to say again, thank you, everyone on council and to Dwayne especially for all of your help throughout the course of the audit. We really could not do this without you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I agree. I know how hard Dwayne worked. And the auditors were here for days and they all worked very hard getting everything straightened out. So thank you, thank you, Dwayne. Um, okay, so we will move on to public comments. And so the public comment I have is from Mr. and Mrs. McGovern. And it says, hello, my wife Dorothy Jo and I would like to discuss the request of records regarding our home's connection to the sewer system at 213 Northwest River Road. We filed an online request for any and all records on September 13th and 14th of 2021, four months ago. As of now, we have received no written communication with regard to the status of our request. Thank you, Matthew and Dorothy McGovern. And we can discuss this. I can't respond to your in public comments. Okay. Um, so are there any other public comments? Okay. Yes, ma'am.
And you may not be able to tell me, but what is owed to the state?
Oh.
You can answer that. You can provide a pure statement of fact in response to, in response to.
To a direct question.
If someone makes a public comment and you want to say something that is purely factual, you can. So if we've got that number and we want to share it, we can.
And for the record, so that everyone else knows what you're asking for, are you asking for how much the city of Martindale owes the state based on the excessive fines from years past?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
How much was the beginning balance and what is the balance now, if you can share?
Balance now is $326,638. See if I can find out what the original balance was here. And based on these records, the opening balance was 475,932.
And through the years, different people have worked on it. I know at one point, someone, did you?
Yes, ma'am.
Got a lot of the fines stopped so that it wouldn't keep going up, even though we were paying on it, so.
We were able to get the interest to stop as well as we were able to begin to book the revenue from utilities that we do not own, which helped us offset in a way that would hopefully prevent us from ever getting in that trap again.
And it's also interest, right? There's no interest charge on that.
Is it also that I thought that 20% of our sales tax pays that off on a monthly basis? So it's roughly about $1,400 a month? That's basically, I thought we were more so paying that off on the sales tax.
It's more than that each month.
Being one of the reports that you sent, right?
Being one of the reports that you sent, right?
This last month, it reduced, yeah, you're right, $1,700. December, it was reduced $2,476. November, it was $2,700. So it's $2,000 to $3,000 a month.
On, from the sales tax? Okay, thank you.
Hi, this is Beth, and sorry, so you are correct. It is 20% of the sales tax per month that's applied towards that liability. And it's automatically drawn by the comptroller.
And that's the only funds from the city that, that pays for that fund?
Yes, at this time, yes.
Do you need a tissue? Okay, um, so we're going to go into the reports. And so in the mayor's report, I just wanted to comment on this. I have been working on this. And my next step is to go into the storage shed and try to find the records. And I have contacted the people who originally done the reports in trying to get copies, so.
Is it a concern just over their sewage?
Well, they want to do some improvements on their property and they need to know where the lines are.
Oh, where the sewer lines are, I see, okay.
Okay, um, so I need to read this proclamation from a lot of the things that we did last week on the grant that we have a number of things that we have to do and are going to be doing along the way that is required by the federal government. So this proclamation is declaring February as the fair housing month, whereas Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, as amended, prohibits discrimination in housing and declares it a national policy to provide within constitutional limits, fair housing in the United States and whereas the principle of fair housing is not only national law and national policy, but a fundamental human concept and entitlement for all Americans. And whereas the National Fair Housing Law during the month of February provides an opportunity for all Americans to recognize that complete success in the goal of equal housing opportunity can only be accomplished with the help and cooperation of all Americans. Now, therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Martindale, do proclaim February as Fair Housing Month in the City of Martindale and do hereby urge all citizens of this locality to become aware of and support the Fair Housing Law. In witness whereof, we have affixed our signatures and seal on this the first day of February 2022. And so I will be posting this on this court window and on our other door. I just didn't get it done today. And I've already posted it at the post office. And I'm going to go down to Hermano's Restaurant and see if I can post it on their bulletin board. We have to post it in three different locations or we have to pay to put it in the newspaper. So we chose to run around town and post it in three different places. So that's my report. And now, Jared, do you have a report on our hiring activities?
Yeah, the only significant update I have for City Council tonight is that we, the panel for the Chief of Police position, the interview panel, has made a selection of the finalists. Those finalists have been notified and have been requested to interview in person with the City Council at an upcoming weekend. Right now, it's scheduled for the weekend of February 18th. All but one of the finalists have responded and affirmed that they're still interested and are going to submit their required materials. And so we're all on track to hold those interviews in coming weeks. Prior to that, we'll provide the City Council the resumes and any other information that was gathered through the application process and screening process up to that point. And we'll have interviews. I think we have one scheduled for Friday night, a couple on Saturday, and then right now, looks like maybe just one on Sunday, but we're working to confirm that, that last. But, so that's all I have. Subject to any questions, that's the end of my report.
Does anybody have any questions?
How many, how many applicants, Jared? Is it?
Uh, I don't have the exact number with me, but it was somewhere between 50 and 60 total applicants.
I think following down to the ones having been interviewed.
We're down, we're down to six finalists were requested to interview. Five have responded and confirmed that they're available and will, are still interested in the position. And then I'm still waiting to, for confirmation from, from one of those finalists. If, if that person doesn't respond to us, then the panel may go on to you know, request an interview from one of the alternates.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and we're ready for the financial report from Dwayne.
I wanted, I wanted to ask on that one before we move on about the other position that we're currently seeking for. Where, where are we at on that, Jared?
Are you referencing the Director of Building Planning and Development?
Yes.
Yeah, so I've interviewed both candidates. Finished up the second interview last, weekend before last. And there's still some screening activities that we want to do prior to making a selection. Hopefully, I'll have a chance to wrap up that in the coming days. Being out of town this last week has slowed me down some, admittedly, but we should have, have a way forward on that position here soon.
So they've already both been interviewed. You're just completing some other screening and then by the end of the week, or?
Yeah, so the, the thought process is give them kind of a practical exercise, you know, give them a what-if scenario. Just like, they both meet the minimum qualifications for the, for the position. They both would be qualified for the position. But to help make that selection, I'm considering going through a practical exercise. And I want to make sure I give them enough time to respond to that, so. The delay at this point on me, I need to get that out to them. If I'm able to do that this week, should have a response by hopefully Monday, be able to review those by Monday and be able to proceed from there. But that's, that's notional right now. Did that answer your question?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Okay, then we'll move on to the financial report.
Okay, what I provided to council is the financial report. As of the, well, first off, the bank balances are as of today. You can see the, the amounts that we have in the general fund, the street and road funds, the court restricted, police restricted funds listed there. With a total of $145,000 of funds over in First Lockhart Bank. Then you see the emergency fund is at $222,000. And then the PFIA fund, the Public Funds Investment Act fund. You see that little subtotal down there of $538,697. Included in that, in that fund, you see a new line item. I added that second one that says grant funds. Those funds I moved out of the First Lockhart Bank to help bring our balances into compliance there. And then I also transferred a significant part of the property tax revenue over to the general fund overflow. You see, it's over $300,000 at this point, and we still have $95,000 in the long-term capital improvement fund. And there's the report on the amount of fines due to state that I update each month. Any questions on the bank balances? This is, this is the time of the year when the monies, balances are high.
Yeah.
And growing.
Yeah.
So, okay, next we'll look at the general fund budget report. I apologize for all the little C's on here. A lot of those lines didn't need to be there, but if you, if you can move it over a little to the left so we can see the percentages. Maybe my report cut them off, but we're jumping along for it.
There, yeah, that's the most I get.
That's all she can get. Okay, very good. So you see total income, and this is, this report is through December. It's too early in the month to have the one for November yet. This is the one I would have given a couple of weeks ago, and I've not been out sick. But through the, through December, which is the first quarter of the year, you see we're at $241,000. This last column on the right shows percentage, 43% of the income for the city has come in in the first quarter. And you can see that's because, as we all know, property taxes are due in the first quarter, technically by the end of January, so even more of that money will come in. And this typically does not include people who pay on the last day of December. It takes a few days for it to work through the county and back to us. So that number will jump up significantly in the January report. If you go down to expenses, you'll see personnel at $68,450. You look over to the right, that's only about 19% of the budget. We should be at 25% of the budget for, through the first quarter. But with, you know, being down a man or two in the police department, those numbers are down this far to date. And then operating expenses, if you go look down those line items there, $14,381, 17% of budget. That looks good. Total expenses are 18%. So, so far, the expenses are, are low related to operating. If you scoot on down a little further, you'll see contracted, things like auditors and attorneys. Going down past that, the next page. It's another big one there. Street maintenance. I don't want to complain about that one being over budget, I don't think. 33%, so we're a little bit ahead on the percentage, but if you look, see the audit fee up there, it's at 65%. That expense is heavily loaded toward the front part of the year, which, that's the report that we just, we just received. Then if you go on down from there, you'll be able to see the, this is the vendor balance detail. This just kind of shows the movement of expenses for the month to our various vendors. Down through those. See if y'all have any questions on any of those.
So the community library was $10,500, so we pay them two payments a year?
Yeah, one on like the first of December and one like the first of March, if I remember right. Is that right? Looks like I didn't get them paid until the 13th.
Oh, so they got both payments in January and December?
No, it's just, the positive is when it's entered the system and the negative is when the check is ready.
Right. Gotcha.
This is kind of, you'll see some of them, there's no negative. That means at the end of December, like that half mark, that one was unpaid. We had the bill, it was unpaid.
Right, gotcha, gotcha.
Going down.
That's right.
It's all good, I think? Can you drive?
Yeah.
So which sheet are we on now?
How about Tommy Fudge, $2,400? Was that like a big payment all at once for auto mowing or something?
We were filling a lot of potholes.
That's the street repair, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I see, because it's in December.
That's, and that's both labor and materials. He's doing the, the street. He, he picks up the material and we put it in his bill.
Okay.
We filled up a lot of potholes over on, off in 1979, what's that, Bock, Bock, no, what's?
Bockers, Slings.
Bockers?
Yeah.
Those holes were going to China. We had to do about four loads of gravel over there.
Good.
This might be the perfect place to mention. I did talk to Donald, the road maintenance supervisor, Collin County. He said that the overlay would be done in April or early May. And just to let everybody know, you know, it's rough now, but that's just the first of the process. You come in, you do the potholes, you do the edges of the road, and then you put the overlay. So that is not the final product. But he did text me and said it looks like, they had, like we said previously, last council meeting, that the asphalt plan was down, they were not doing it, so that's what his latest update is, so. Okay.
Got that off here.
All right. Hey, let's stop there.
Utilities.
All right, we see the first quarter, $81,471 received, and it's 25% of budget, so that is right on plan. And the expenses, $77,557, 24% of budget, so that's good. We're right on the money with the, with the utility fund year to date. And then if you go on down, Adrian, to the next report, that will show the vendor payments.
The one.
Yeah, you must have dropped some of those.
You want me to put it on the?
It's on, it's on our paper.
Yeah, we've got it written out here.
Yeah, I'm seeing it.
By the print, you're wrong.
Bluebonnet Electric.
Oh, yeah, that's the bottom of the sheet, go up.
J and K Utility Services.
Kind of messed up when it was scanned.
Texas Disposal. And Modern Waste Farthing. Nothing out of the ordinary there.
When did the city start using J and K?
Certainly.
When did the city start using J and K?
I don't know.
Who's J and K? Oats.
That bill actually just came in today. And it's unpaid at this point.
J and K, what do they do, do they?
They helped. Yeah, they helped Pete with some particular job here.
They subcontracted that one.
Yeah.
The vendor, render, right?
Yeah, it's a backflow preventer that's at one of our list stations.
Yeah.
Is this the one you wanted? Or is this not it? Oh, there's that chain case.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I brought that up so everyone knows. They, they have been a client of mine for almost a decade now, but I did not know that they were doing any work for the city, so that's why.
Oh, yeah, yes, why interested.
Yes.
I don't think that there's a conflict.
I don't think so, but I asked and I figured I had you guys an explanation for why.
Sure, the utility business, it's a big, small town, right?
Yeah.
All right. So that's good. Oh, you got those up?
Yeah.
All right, very good.
Going down to the next page.
Going down to the next page if there is one. Maybe, yeah, there weren't any, there wasn't any activity on the grant fund this morning. So that's the finance report. Everything looks good and healthy.
Any questions? Any questions? All right, we'll move on to the police report.
We had wrote 10 citations for the past month in January. That's down low, I know it was out for a while soon. Apologize about that. And we had two calls for services. We had two burglaries of some businesses, and we're still working on those. Recruiting, trying to find some officers to come and assist them. So, doing what I'm doing.
Hey, those two bills, did they have alarms? Thank you.
But something was still stolen?
Oh.
Oh, okay.
So we've had three staff people out with COVID, so.
Yeah.
And Tommy's been one of them. He just come back yesterday.
Glad you're back with us.
Thank you.
Better. Someone beat me with that, I think, other than that.
I haven't, by the way, too.
Everybody's getting, I got, I had Christmas COVID.
Right now. Okay, um, so we have the boards and commissions reports. Is anyone online from the historic commission? We haven't heard from them. They have done a number of scenic, or not scenic quarter, what do they call them? Like certificate of appropriateness in the historic district. They've done a couple. Um, so I know they're active and working. Parks Department.
Is Susan on?
I'm looking. It doesn't seem so, unless it's user one.
Well, I'll, I'll be brief then. The grant that Sonia and Carlton worked on from the LCRA to get the grant to purchase trees at Allen Bates Park was accepted. And so we will receive that grant for $1,000. I have since gone to Paradise Palms to purchase the trees because they were only going to be on sale till the end of the month. So I purchased two live oak trees, one red oak tree and one chinkapin oak. So the oaks have been purchased, they will be delivered this week. And then planning to plant them on April 9th, I think. And we're going to be doing some mulching at the parks. Also, I have gone with one friends of the park, Sean McDonald. We checked out all the electricity at Allen Bates Park. We looked at all the GFI plugs, they are all bad and need to be replaced. The three light fixtures in, in the park, two above the Allen Bates sign, and the one in the basketball court. The one in the basketball court's working, the two other lights are not. So I have reached out to a couple of vendors to give us a bid to replace all three lights, which will be under the guidance of the Dark Sky Ordinance, which we will be discussing and adopting. So the lights will be replaced with LED lights and with shields going in a downward motion. I think it's a necessity to regain our lights there in the park because it's a turn in the road there of 1979, and it's a little dark there. So I have been pursuing that. And beside that, Phase One has been mowed, it looks great. Allen Bates Park has been mowed. And I've also been looking at repairing of the split rail fence at Guardiola Park. Looks like it'll be about $274 in materials for five posts and eight rails. And so we will be fixing the fence there as well. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Oh, thanks, that's quite a bit.
I'm sorry, since we're on there, I wanted to have a discussion with you because I know that I've sent the email, and I've gotten numerous emails. I know that I've talked to the council before about putting an ADA swing there for, you know, just to be ADA compliant with the swing set. I know that there's concerns about the swing being too expensive. I did get some quotes that were sent from LCRA because they're all, you know, in for wanting Martindale to have an ADA compliant swing there at the park. I understand the concern about needing a ramp, but I feel like if we could get everything done for maybe $2,500 or under two grand, like, and then taking some of the funds from the park and the city also throwing some in. And the volunteers said that they would be able to do it that day. I don't see, like, why that's not something that we as a city would want.
Can I interrupt? Adrian is setting a meeting, you were just telling me about that, with the whole Parks Department, and trying to get everybody on board and doing the reporting of the master plan. And you and Jared, we're going to meet with all of that.
Yes.
So if you could come to that meeting, probably.
The seventh.
With, with your, with those suggestions, that would be wonderful, then that could be talked at, at that meeting? Okay.
I mean, I'll just comment briefly about that, though, is that on the wheelchair accessible swing, you have to have a paved surface all the way to where the swing is. So even though we have a ramp going up into where the swing set currently is, once you get up the ramp and get into the bark enclosure of the swing set assembly, it's not solid surface. So you have to have a solid surface all the way to where the swing is so the person can push the wheelchair on a solid surface and not in the mulch.
I know that, like, at different schools, though, I mean, I work in a school setting, and I know that all the surfaces are not concrete.
Yeah, this probably should be discussed.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll discuss that.
And it might be something that they do want to see through because it was mentioned at the, at the master plan, planning stuff.
Briefly, there's a pretty good number of people who voted, or at least surveyed, that they were interested in ADA.
In doing that same thing.
Good, okay, yeah. Yeah, and I just thought I'd bring it up because, like, time is, you know, ticking from whenever we have the event in town for the grant, and I know that the volunteers and LCRA was interested in, in doing it.
Thank you. Um, Lisa, if you don't mind, let's do the river board before the planning and zoning.
You bet, go right ahead.
Is Joy or Charlie Oldson?
I'm here.
Joy, what do you have to report?
Um, really just two things. One is that I was able to obtain an F, an investigative report from TCEQ regarding the large-scale soil disturbance activities going on at 601 Northwest River Road. And TCEQ is basically working with the owner and general contractor there to get into compliance. And I believe they have until February 3rd for that. And the, so I haven't driven by there lately, so I'm not sure what, what, what's going on.
Joy, may I ask a question? This is Lisa.
Yes, certainly.
Well, what exactly were they out of compliance with? And what did TCEQ say that they needed to do? And if they don't, what's the penalty?
This is what I know. TCEQ has stated that they had failed to submit a notice of intent for large construction prior to commencing regulated activity. Soil disturbing activity was observed and no erosion or sediment controls were installed to mitigate discharge into the river. The TCEQ has recommended the following corrective actions that they submit a signed notice of intent, create and implement a stormwater pollution prevention plan, and post a site notice. They are to send proof of documentation and photos to the Austin Regional Office and directly to the investigator. Oh, I don't know what fines, what the fines are or consequences if they don't meet that date of February 3rd.
So Joy, Sam here, I have a question. So with the clearing that they did, did it reach another level because they did five acres or more? Was that the, the level of the?
Yes, that, that would require a large construction permit.
Okay. I noticed some silt retention screening had gone up a little bit over.
Yes.
Far and closest to the skull road.
Yes, they probably, probably about 20% of the waterfront has silt fencing.
Okay.
Um, the other thing I wanted to mention was that TCEQ has announced a public meeting with the Walton Group regarding the Cotton Center Water Treatment Plant Permit Application, and that is scheduled for February 28th at 7:00 PM. And that is all the details I have at the moment.
All right, so we need to be there.
Question, Jared. Jared, you still there?
Yeah.
Have they, have they submitted, have they, have you, has the Walton Group submitted any type of draft permit to you? Being us, being, being them, they're going through our city limits, so they contacted you about that draft permit that was sent to the TCEQ.
I know that, I have not seen anything recently from them in the last number of weeks. I know when we initially brought the apparent possible discrepancy in their application to their attention some months ago, that they indicated that they were going to refile an amended application or amend those particular sections of their application. I have not seen the, the final version in a complete package. So I'll be reaching out to them to request that prior to the 28th. And we need to maintain our, our comments that were submitted on behalf of the city. Well, we'll assess those at that time.
That would be beneficial for us to see, to see that as soon, before, in a reasonable amount of time before, before the public hearing. It'd be nice to know what they actually did submit.
What, what we can do is, well, what, what we might want to do is put that on as a future agenda item for next meeting on the 15th to review the status of that. And then also discuss amongst the council what, what comments, if, if any, need to be additionally presented in that public meeting or what other positions or statements that need to be made on behalf of the city, the government. So we, we can, we can have that discussion in the future.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I also know, one, one additional thing that the river board had asked the city, when we do have our workshop, if we can, would consider, if the city of Martindale would consider having some kind of ordinance that would address the clearing of property along the river. So I'm just making a note of that in an email. She, Joy asked that.
Maybe put that as a future item.
Yeah, I will. I just wanted to mention because she had asked that.
Is, Joy, are you still on?
I'm still on.
Isn't, isn't there something in regards to, even if a city does not have any ordinances or controls in regards to making sure that this type of activity along the water's edge does not happen, that the property owner is responsible to go through the state for permitting? Is that correct?
That's correct.
So even if we don't have something?
I see.
But what's really important to me is that we, as a group and as a city, need to know what that something is.
Yeah.
So that when someone calls and says, do I need a permit to bulldoze my riverbank? We say, as a city, no, however, you must meet the requirements of the state. And we need to know what they are.
Okay, are there any more questions?
Mayor, I wanted, there's something that I wanted to talk about with Dee. I don't know if it's appropriate for me to go back. It's just something I wanted to mention.
With the police?
Can I go back to, okay. So I wanted to, it's during the police report. I just, I know that I got a card in the mail that says that we have a high-level sex offender in Martindale. I don't know if anybody else got the postcard in the mail. So the postcard states that it's a high-level sex offender that is now on 1979, and they are paroled. So I just didn't know if our police chief, well, he's gone.
You know what, I'll take a picture of it and text it to me. I'll take a picture of it and text it to me and ask him.
And just to let our, our citizens be aware.
As a practical matter, our police department does manage sexual offender registrations.
Yes.
But I can't speak to this particular case, but as, as a general rule of thumb, we, we process all of that for the city.
And, and anyone at any time can just do a Google search of sex offenders in your city or your county.
I know, but, you know, just like me as a citizen, I got this card in the mail. And, I mean, is it real? Is it fake? Is it, you know, is, you know, is a city going to say something about it? Like, is this actually, like, going on? Or, you know, just a little bit of feedback is why I wanted to make sure and bring it up. And also, 1979 is close proximity to the park. There's, you know, I just wanted to know.
Thank you.
I'm going to make a note so I don't forget to do it.
And I need to even look up what a high-level sex offender is. I mean, I don't, I have no idea. I don't know.
Yeah, we'll, we'll ask Chief Ward, yeah. Okay, um.
Can, can I just have one closing statement to Joy?
Sure.
Joy, I think there's been some talk, and we may discuss it next month, of just simply combining the Parks Committee and the River Committee. So we may be talking about that in next month.
Okay, let me know.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you bet. Any other questions for me?
Thank you, Joy.
Thank you so much.
I appreciate your time. Yep.
Yes, Joy, we'll let you know when we get that draft permit from the developer, Walton Group, to see what actually, what they're submitting to the state.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for staying on top of that.
Sure.
Okay, Lisa, we are ready for planning and zoning?
I'm gonna let Mike go first. Do you have any, just a few little bits?
The Taco Filets, I'll let you go ahead.
Okay. I will try to keep my voice intact and move a little closer to the microphone. I have quite a bit to report. So specifically on the agenda, it states that my report has to do with the hotel occupancy tax. In your packet, you will find a single piece of paper that begins with, "Don't forget mandatory hotel occupancy tax report." We also have it on the screen. As this particular project has, maybe by default, fallen into my world for several years, it's been difficult to narrow things down. I will tell you that. There are some numbers that I would like to, and asking Dwayne to help me just determine the two documents that you sent, thank you very much. Does that appear? I'm looking at the first one. Actually, let me back up for a second. Let me finish this document first, and then we'll go to the dollars. I don't want to get people confused. So it's on the screen. The important part that I want the public and our council to understand and know are the bullet-pointed items on this document. This document came from Texas Municipal League in one of the weekly newsletters. This document came from Texas Municipal League in one of the weekly newsletters that we get as council people.
This document?
Yes, exactly the way it is written. And it just talks about that, you know, there's mandatory reporting for the city, and Duane has been doing exactly that for as long as he's been here. So we are in no way compliant, and that's all great and fine. It seemed like what I would call a million-dollar question in the last few years is, well, what can we use that money for? You know, we are all aware that any hotel occupancy tax, and I will briefly define, even though it says the word hotel, it is not specific to a hotel. It is specific to any type of establishment that has a short-term rental. Some people call that Airbnb. Some people call that VRBO. Some people call that HomeAway. I mean, there's all different kinds. Nonetheless, I believe in two thousand and nine, the city of Martindale put in our ordinances, has been in the books for quite some time, that we require a short-term rental. I'll call him an innkeeper or proprietor to remit seven percent to the city. The state, Duane, is it six point something or six percent?
Six point two five.
That's what I thought, six point two five. So.
Six point two five is the
State.
State.
Tax.
For?
Short-term rentals.
I think that's right.
I think, I think, I've read, I've read it enough, and I think that's exactly correct. And so there's been this huge discrepancy in regards to these entities, as in Airbnb, HomeAway, VRBO. They have, in many, many, many states, Texas being one of them, have collaborated with the state comptroller's office to remit that tax on the behalf of the innkeeper or proprietor. Makes it super easy. You know, it just gets charged. They pay it. Person who owns the place doesn't have to do anything. However, in the state of Texas, I believe Houston, Dallas, Austin, and maybe San Antonio have agreements with each of those entities, Airbnb, all the different companies.
San Marcos.
To
And smaller towns.
To actually remit the city tax for them. It has been, it's a cluster. Let me make it be clear. It is a cluster. It is, it is confusing, and there's a lot of people who want to be compliant but don't quite know how. And as far as I'm concerned as a city, it's our responsibility to have the ability to explain the how. And we can, you know, send them to the forms and and what have you. But finally, I found all we've known for quite some time is that the money that does come in is restricted funds or are restricted funds, and those funds are only to be used for tourism. That's all we've really ever heard, despite the digging I've even done over the years. More recently, I found this particular document happened to, you can all go back in your email. It came in on January fourteenth of this year. And it listed, and I'm saying this for the public, even though, you know, you can read it. And when it says tax code section three-five-one dot zero-zero-nine, that's state of Texas tax code. That's not our ordinance. So the money, those bullet points, is that the money can be used for convention or information centers, convention delegates, registration. Some of these, I've thought, I want definitions for what this really means. The third point, advertising to attract tourists. We kind of started one of those projects and then put it on hold for a bit. Arts, promotion and improvement. This, this is the one that blew me away that I was unaware of. Historical restoration and preservation projects. So we all have driven through San Marcos in the last fifteen, twenty years and have watched the improvements, the sidewalks, the streetlights, the signage. All of that has the ability to come out of this restricted fund. That was news to me.
That's good.
That makes me super excited, you know, that we possibly could go that direction. Last bullet point is signage, you know, directing the public to sites and attractions, including a sign that might say, "Short-term rentals" with an arrow, you know? It could include, if the city so chose and the property owner so chose, we could put a sign outside of the establishment. It's a thought. I don't know that to be for certain, but it's a thought. Maybe not everybody would want that. So I wanted to report specifically on that. And also to let you know that since the council made a decision at our last meeting excuse me, to continue to postpone the hotel occupancy tax workshop until a date undetermined. Because this information was new to me, and it's been a project I've been working on, and I'm not exaggerating for more than five years. I finally found the definitions of those bullets. And so in workshop form, happens to be, I believe, a twelve- or sixteen-page document that I got directly from the Attorney General's
So you sent us an email?
I have not yet.
Oh, I thought you said it was a January email.
The January email is the one you see up here. I found the definitions
Who sent it?
For what? Texas Municipal League. It came in our weekly newsletter report. You know, you read down and see what the topics are.
So who gets those?
Everybody.
Everybody gets them.
You should be getting them.
And, pardon?
T M L.
We get them in our box.
Yeah, in your, well, you get them, years ago, we used to get them hard copy. They quit doing that, and they went to just digital. So anyway, I wanted to report on that and also to let it, pardon me, that we are in complete compliance with our reporting.
Just because we post the budget every year?
No, because our accountant sends the money that is remitted from the proprietors based on their income of short-term rental to the city to the tune of seventy per, seven, excuse me, seven percent. And he remits that quarterly.
So the total that that customers have to pay are, is what, almost set fourteen percent in addition to their monthly or, oh, each day, right?
In addition to, so for
So, so if you pay fifty, you have to pay another fif, fourteen percent, almost fourteen.
Let me do, let me do easy math for you, for me, for easy math for me. So if it costs a hundred dollars to stay a night, one night, in a short-term rental, the state is going to, first of all, currently, the way that it is, I believe, in the next five years, there will be legislation and these rules will be changed. Because if you look it up, people are hot about it. They are not happy because it's not easy. So I feel, I feel for you and me. So I'm just gonna use Airbnb as a general term for ease of conversation. So the night stay is a hundred dollars. Airbnb charges the guest an additional six point two five percent off top of the hundred. They
For that, that goes to the state.
To the state. Airbnb remits that, pays that to the state. However, we on our books have a seven percent. That is the responsibility of the proprietor. We have it in our books that it can be remitted monthly, quarterly, or annually.
It doesn't have to be seven percent. It can be up to seven percent.
Negative.
Want everybody to know.
Negative.
It has to be?
Seven percent. That was what was voted on.
Right, but it can be changed.
Well, sure. If, if you, if 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 a council so chooses to make a change, sure can be. However, that's where we are right now. And so what I wanted to know was how many short-term rentals are complying with some remitting that seven percent? Now, I've done my homework over the years, and I want to make certain that it's clear that this seven percent is subject to short-term rentals inside of the city limits as well as in the ETJ. So it doesn't matter if you're not inside the city limits, you are still responsible. If I just go to one entity, call it Airbnb, and type in Martindale, I can find anywhere between thirty and forty short-term rentals. All right. I had asked Duane some, you know, help me out with some numbers. And in the year of twenty twenty-one, that we've completed that one, so let's just use that as our baseline. One thing that I want to say, when this very began, and there was probably only one proprietor or innkeeper remitting, I remember there being twelve hundred dollars in this restricted fund. I remember hearing three, three thousand something. I remember then hearing twelve thousand something. That twelve thousand number was probably only three years ago.
Less.
Okay, maybe less than three years ago.
Now it's over thirty.
No, no, ma'am. Duane, what is our current balance in our restricted hotel occupancy tax?
The cash balance report tonight listed forty-eight thousand seventy-seven dollars.
Forty-eight thousand dollars. That's significant money, in my opinion. Um, and what I want to also report is that I have found, with the help of our accountant, Duane, one thing I'll never report, I'll never report names, and I'll never report addresses. This is all about dollars and cents, as far as I'm concerned. Currently, we have, what I'm seeing is six. We have six people who are short-term rental proprietors who are remitting their seven percent. Six, even if we be conservative and say thirty, six people out of thirty, and we're at forty-eight grand? You do the math and see where we could end or should be. We wanted streetlights. We wanted parking places. We wanted sidewalks. We want ADA. All of those things I'm now realizing could come from that fund. So there is that part. Um. Are there any questions about any of that?
Well, it does require an overnight stay when you, when you, when you have an event. Like, we were gonna, we, the city council was gonna give fifteen hundred dollars to the cook-off, and then it didn't happen. We even had the check written, ready to go. And, but it requires an overnight stay of an event because it does have to benefit the short-term rental.
Signs directed to public
Yeah, I believe
Signs to attractions. Why can't we say?
I believe, I believe we were spending that money appropriately.
Yeah.
The overnight stay is, the seven percent comes from the overnight stay.
Yeah.
So that's not part of it in that regard.
So I I just want to say two things, if I may, without getting like into like a workshop right now, but I'll make it just really, really easy. So, um, I think that a lot of people that do have Airbnbs just see the inconsistencies within the city, like people that are remitting their part. They are being compliant because they want to be compliant. Those that are not are seeing that, you know, what is the city gonna do anyway? Like, how are you holding, how are you holding them, you know, responsible to doing this? I know that on the paper, it says mandatory hotel occupancy tax reporting, but what if they don't? What's gonna happen?
Here was my fear. When I saw that mandatory, of course, I read it. I'm like, okay, I know we are in compliance with this. But when it talks about a fifty-day, what's on the screen? A fifty-day window and how, you know, the first reporting deadline is February twenty. The state is gonna get their money. And I don't know. When I say the fear that struck through me was, there were a lot of years that we, as a city, were writing a lot of traffic citations, unknowing that we were supposed to be remitting money because we were out of whack in regards to income versus. The last thing, God's green earth, that I want is a city, is a state to come here and say, why have you not been enforcing and or, in my opinion, you gotta educate before you can enforce. That's my personal opinion. And you've got to make it easy for people to comply. That's just
And like you said, you know, definitely, you've been on the council. It's been a while. This has been your baby. Like you said, you worked on it for the past five years. So, you know, you have the expertise in this. You know, so thank you for for doing it and looking forward to the workshop. But I also wanted to say, whenever you said we had the meeting, we were supposed to have it, it was indefinitely. I remember at our last meeting that we stated that we would have the workshop whenever we had that position filled. And whoever was hired for that position, that could be an active part of the conversation, who would be, you know, in this position and doing that, then we would have it. But we need the person first.
You are correct. I do remember that. Thank you for clarifying that. So if there's not any other questions about that part, I do have some other information that regards P and Z.
I just have a quick question about the mandatory. That is this, is this requiring and being mandatory towards those Airbnbs that are currently paying the tax? Or is this reaching out via Airbnb, is giving this to other Airbnb hosts that's saying, even though you're not compliant with the city, you have to be? Or is this with those that currently are compliant?
I, I think there may be some leeway in interpretation. However, my opinion of the interpretation is that this was directed toward city staff that said, your accountant or your financial, whomever, needs to be certain that you are reporting. This is when it started and became mandatory. Because I think for a while, it was, you know, if you got some, great. If you don't, okay, fine, too. Well, enough people are doing this that the state's gonna get theirs. So this has come down the pipe. So I do believe this was directed to city officials, not to proprietors. That's my opinion.
What I like about your document is it pretty well spelled out what we can use this money for.
Correct, correct.
For me, for example, signage would be great.
Yeah.
You know, historical turnout, turn left.
There's still more details on it because we can't say downtown venues, you know, outside venues.
If you, if you want the
Because they're, they're only for one night, right?
If you, if you want the non-distilled version, the, the site is three
If, if you want the non-distilled version, the, the site is three-five-one-point-one-zero-one of the Texas tax code, and that will, that will give you
Say that again? Yes, it is zero-zero-nine, she's got them, yeah.
Right, so, so that, that, zero-zero-nine points out, and it's an, it's a helpful document. It points out what the city wants to do in terms of reporting. But the, the statute cite that, and it's consistent with what Lisa provided, but it provides you more comprehensive listing of how this, this particular type of tax revenue may be used. If you want to look at it familiarly.
And, and like I said, I, I printed out this twelve or sixteen-page document that outlines every one of those bullets in detail that I will provide and or bring in a workshop. You know, that's not something to go through.
Indirectly, these would help Airbnbs or short-term.
It would help everything.
Everybody, they have, they have, know it, they know what's going on, here's the direction, you're starting downtown. We've got the chili cook-off, we've got the water safari, blah, blah, blah.
Everything. And when you talk about a one-night stay, I am not familiar with one single short-term rental. And this goes all the way back to having a quote bed and breakfast years and years ago before short-term rental was ever established or Airbnb was ever established. And those innkeepers always have a two-night, two-night minimum when you stay in those places, typical. One thing I would like to just add about it, and this is for really more of the public's information. If you have, be it a room in your house or a guest house that you do use as short-term rental, and you have guests who want to stay there for twenty-eight days, on our books, twenty-eight days exempts you from the city's seven percent tax.
It's considered long-term.
Yeah.
However, thirty days is what the state determines long-term. So the way I look at it is, somebody books for, maybe I shouldn't say this, but if somebody books for twenty-seven days, say, oh man, don't you want to stay for a few more? You know, it helps every, I mean, you know, I mean, it's, it's, it's on the books, it is the way it is. Okay, that's all of that, if there's not any other questions.
Thank you, Lisa.
I, I, I have some other really important information that is not related to short-term rentals specifically. Um, we, I have, and I'm counting one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, specific use permit applications that have not formally been submitted, but they're waiting for me to tell them, do it, because I needed to make this report. They are all for short-term rental. Some are in Martin, some are in what we call Martinville proper. Some are on Northwest River Road, some are in Hobson Ranch. They are everywhere. So I want to let it be known that there are that many, two, three, four, five, six, seven, um, on the docket. And when it comes to applying for, if you want to have a short-term rental in the zone of R1, which is residential, single-family detached, it requires an SUP, which stands for specific use permit. The process for that is that we receive an application. That particular application is ten dollars. Along with, they have to just prove that they own the property, blah, blah. We have to mail letters to every property owner within two hundred feet of the applicant's property lines, letting them know. Those letters must go in the mail eleven days prior to a public hearing. The public hearing would be, say, six-thirty. Public would come, anybody so chose, give their opinion directly following it. That's when this council changes their hat and becomes the Planning and Zoning Commission, which Mike McClaff chairs currently. And we would review each of those and determine their outcome. That is on the docket. The other things that are on the docket are two variances for subdivisions that also fall under planning and zoning. I want it to be known on record and for anyone listening, for a specific use permit, you can find it in chapter one-five-five dot zero-four-zero to see the procedure and the way that it goes.
Chapter what?
One-five-five dot zero-four-zero. For a variance can be found in chapter one-five-four dot zero-zero-eight. No public hearing is required for a variance. However, we could, if, if the applicants, there's two, if the applicants have all information in on time, we could evaluate those variances at the same time we do all of these SUPs, which is a short, which is the specific use permit. Lastly, there are two scenic corridor applications, both of which have already been submitted and paid. I cannot tell you a hundred percent, because I wanted to get through this meeting tonight, that their applications are quote "complete." However, there is no hearing for the scenic corridor either. The council is the one who approves. So we will be provided when it's given as per what is, what is stated in chapter one-five-zero dot zero-two-eight. That, um, we're asking for site plans, you know, we want to know what it looks like, and then it complies. So.
And that's, you're talking about the court, the, the, for the building or for the scenic corridor?
There are, there are, there are three major things to be dealt with. One is a specific use permit. That's where I've got six or seven lined up. One is for the scenic corridor, where there are two applicants lined up. The third is for a variance. And there are two applicants that have not submitted their application yet because they were waiting. So there's a lot, we got a lot of work to do. And I just wanted that to be, let it be known so that we're not, the rest of the council is not surprised. And, um.
So you got all these seven, like, just this week for the short-term rental?
Some have been brewing for a while. Some know that this is what they're going to do. They've just not opened yet, okay? Um, if in fact, your property is in mixed-use zone.
Well, they can't even open until they get this done first.
Yes and no. If your property is in mixed-use, you are not required to have a specific use permit. You are required to remit the seven percent. And so we, as a city, at this moment, do not have any controls in place that provide opportunity for those proprietors to say, hey, I'm in mixed-use, I know I don't have to have an SUP, but I'm gonna be remitting. What form do I fill? That's something I'm looking forward to us being able to have. Any other questions?
So basically.
They're being reading.
Well, yeah.
And that's the last, that's the last, not even a workshop.
Bottom line, if.
Now, we.
No, 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 hold on, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Lisa stated, it goes through this process, and then it eventually all comes in from the council for, for review and for voting, if it's.
And these are, these are all, at least half of what I've numbered out. At least half are gonna be on the table this month. And so based on our calendar, I am requesting, and I've talked to, um, Commissioner Chair McClaff, that we have a special meeting on the twenty-second of February that would end up being, and Sylvia knows how to lay these out, mayor, where we would have, we would have a public hearing on, if, if we can have a public hearing for more than one thing, I don't think we need to, but we would have a public hearing for the SUPs. And then there's no other public hearing needed. It would then go into a planning and zoning meeting where the SUPs would be evaluated. SUPs can be approved, approved with conditions, or denied. If they are denied, we are required, and it's written in the, in the code, reasons for denial. And so that's why, throughout those chapters, for each person to become familiar with what is a legitimate reason. A legitimate reason is not, well, that's next door to my house, and I don't want that. That is not a legitimate reason. There are very specific reasons. So then after, we would have the P and Z portion of that meeting where the SUPs would be evaluated. I do believe the variance would also be evaluated under P and Z. Then the meeting would then go to a special city council meeting. And that is where the scenic corridor issues would be evaluated. Now, the information that I've been given thus far on the two applications, and like I said, on the scenic corridor, they have already submitted their application and their fee, which is a hundred dollars for that part. And so I do believe they will be ready. So.
For the scenic corridor?
Correct, for the twenty-second.
You're not sure exactly what's gonna be on the meeting. Somebody you want it?
Twenty-second of February.
So by when can we have all of the paperwork that we need to go over for that? Like, I would like to receive an email with all of the applications, with the documents that you're stating, with the descriptions, like, everything all together so that we're prepared, so we don't come in on the twenty-second, and we just have a stack of papers that we, we haven't even gone over.
Sure.
This is a loaded meeting. And maybe we shouldn't do all of it.
Two weeks before.
Oh, thank you for saying that.
Yeah.
Thank you for saying that. Here is the reason that I believe doing it all at one time is the best use of our taxpayers' dollars. Because in our code, it does not state that the applicant has to pay for the letters that go out or the publication in the newspaper. That is a part of our ordinance that I have brought to the table in many years past. That needs to be addressed and changed. That was given the talk to my hand, and never happened. So we are gonna have to pay to put this in the newspaper and to mail out these letters. And we are gonna get the best bang for our buck if we do six or ten at one time. Is that correct, Sylvia?
Yeah.
Thank you. That is my reason.
I just think also, like, you know, I've been hearing a lot, like, there's, like, it seems like if you're having, like, due diligence as council or as a city or as a city entity, if our citizens are needing this done to, you know, take care of what they need to do, a lot of it has to do with time and money and planning and everything else. Then I believe, like, if we just could expedite it and take care of it and do it, it would be the best for the citizens.
Correct, correct. The two, the two, um, projects that are on the docket for the scenic corridor, those people are ready to move. You know, they've got engineers on hold, they've got.
Let's, can we just come up with a date?
June.
Instead of.
February twenty-two.
You realize that we have had the interviewing, we're doing interviews on the eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth.
I do.
And I'm good with the twenty-second. I'm gonna be there at the interview.
Six-thirty?
Six-thirty, same thing.
Can we start earlier? Can we start at five-thirty?
Oh, I can't do five-thirty. I could, I would meet you in the middle at six o'clock, and that's a push for me. And I definitely feel like I need to be here in person. Um, I just, I'm just, I just can't get here. You know, six, six is tough, six-thirty.
Six is fine.
So I'm willing. Part of the reason that I also like to keep things at six-thirty is because that's what the public have in their mind. You know, but I, I'm good with that. I can, I can go six o'clock, and I will write that in my, in my calendar that that'll be at six o'clock. So for the record.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock is when we would begin the public hearing for the SUPs that are listed. And let me just say this.
But you don't have to be here for the public hearing, we could do it earlier if I might do. And then be, be here for the P and Z meeting.
That's two separate meetings, though.
Right.
Well, I mean, they go all back-to-back.
Right.
It, it, it needs to be seen.
She's gonna want to see it through.
I need to hear what the, you know.
With the public's.
What?
If there's any, if there's any objections, they need to hear from, from their neighbors or whatever.
Sure, sure. And so, and let me just say this. It is possible that the six that I have, maybe only three of them end up actually getting their stuff in. You know, so it could only be two or three, even if it's only one.
There's two, looks like.
I got six on my list. There's two for sure, for sure, for sure, on the scenic corridor. And the variance, that one is, you know, I'm gonna be making phone calls to all of these people tomorrow since now that I've determined, we have determined a date and say, look, here's where we are, council's ready to move forward, help expedite your project, get your light of fire and get their stuff in. And if they don't, we can't, we can't do anything about it. But I want it to also be for the record, Sylvia. What that means is that if we have a public hearing on the twenty-second, it means those letters need to be in the mail on the tenth and on the, and or the eleventh, last resort eleventh. I would like for them to go out on the tenth, since, since the office is closed on Friday.
Well, and part of this, of what you're talking about, depends on some of the rest of the agenda.
Uh, this would not.
That we're talking about.
But this would not have, it's not a date, any regular meeting.
I know that, um, part of what's in the agenda as far as zoning.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to. I'm looking forward to, except I will also say, we are where we are, and we cannot, I cannot in good faith, hold someone off from moving forward with a business or building because we think we might make a zoning change.
Well.
Okay.
There, we'll just go on.
Just go on, because, you know, I feel like we're in a P and Z meeting right now.
Well, that was a great report, thank you very much.
I have been informed.
Very good.
I've been informed that everybody wants to be more informed, and so there we go.
Yeah, if we could just send the email, get the applications also.
Absolutely, absolutely. It will all. Absolutely, absolutely. It will all be, and probably what I'll do is I'll have Sylvia email those out so that it won't mess up any opening meetings.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for allowing my time.
Okay, we're going to move on to number seven, consent items for accounts payable and the minutes. There is a set of minutes from our last meeting in your packet. Um. What, Sylvia?
I make a motion that we accept the accounts payable and the minutes for, I have them lined up.
January 11.
For, yeah, January 11, okay, 2022.
I'll second. Okay. Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion?
Yeah, one discussion. There was something about the minutes about coordinating with the river cleanup, the TRPA annual river cleanup.
Yeah.
Coordinate, coordinating our citywide cleanup with their schedule. I spoke to Tommy Gollins and they got it all covered. So I'm, you know, I wouldn't really, it's not really beneficial for them to have the same day.
Oh, okay.
We can be flexible.
Just go forward.
But there's no change that we need to make.
No change.
Yeah, that's the minutes. I discussed it.
Okay.
That's why I brought that up.
Okay. So, so we have a motion and a second. If there's no more discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So the motion carries. Okay, we're going to move on to new business. A, discussion possible action on accepting the fiscal year 2021 annual financial report and independent auditors report that was presented by Haney and Company CPA.
I so move.
So.
One second.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, Sylvia, do you need the individually? Okay, so this is a little bit more important. So, Mike McClabb, how do you vote?
I accept.
Sam Clinton?
Um, I'm going to say no because it was a 68-page document. I haven't seen it. And so I'm going to currently say no, that I don't accept it. I, I just don't, don't know enough about it.
Okay. Sonia, how do you vote?
Um, no, same as Sam. I would have liked to have had an email before to go over it. Um, just, you know, the report just verbally and I would like to go over the documents as well. So I'm a no.
Okay.
And you've, you've.
And so yours, motion and second. So we have three to two. So the motion does carry.
I do have one question. Maybe Dwayne. Dwayne, is there a deadline for us to accept the auditors report?
Uh, not that I'm aware of. I mean, this is three months earlier than like last year.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you, thank you.
So I did forward a copy of that draft to everyone to review the 69 pages.
We already passed it now. I can feel guilty.
Should we put it on the budget next meeting?
To approve it?
Well, we went ahead and approved it, but is there any questions?
We've already approved it.
They could call you if they have any questions.
I'll get it later. I'll just view it later.
When I get the final report, I always put one out for public inspection. We don't have to publish it or anything.
Well, I think you're, oh, I don't see why you shouldn't publish it.
Well, that'd be 69 pages.
69 pages?
It would just be. No, I meant publish it online.
We normally, we used to.
Five copies and I leave one set up there at all times.
We, we used to get Sylvia, I mean Sonia, we used to get minors when they came.
Well, the reason why you didn't get them this time is because it's doomed. Otherwise, if she would have been here, she would have brought in the packets like they normally do.
In place, you saw how it still sits draft on it? That's because there's a representation letter that me and the mayor have to get back to her before she'll make it final.
So it's really not complete. Maybe we ought to.
Cannot do.
Can we change our motion?
Yeah, I can, our two, our two, our concern, two council people can review or we can all review it. If we have concerns, we'll address it to you and.
Should we?
Okay, then here we go. I retract my motion.
So you're going to motion to retract?
I'm, I'm motioning to retract.
Yeah, but we've already voted.
It doesn't matter. And table it.
Uh, what, how, what's the legal way to do this? Can we do that? Okay.
And table item one um, on accepting the FY 2021 annual financial report and independent auditors report presented by Haney and Company CPA. Until when, Mr. Anderson, do you recommend a date? To, for it to, when, when do you recommend that it comes back around?
They have to sign still at the.
Uh, at the next, at the next meeting. We've just got to get a letter back to them. And, but if you want to wait until.
Since we are early, I think we should, and we want people to be able to review, table it at the first meeting in March.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second, I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the motion carries.
And I apologize. I realized.
Well, I should, I was out of the room.
Yeah, I would have asked.
I apologize.
Yeah, so it's really not complete, so.
And I was unaware.
Our fellow council members' concerns, and I agree.
Yeah, no, I do too. I'm good.
Okay, we got that one resolved.
Okay, so we will have that on the next agenda.
And then I would just add, like, Dave.
Meeting in March.
They've always provided copies. I think that's still enough time for them to send copies. I don't think that we as a city should be making the copies for a service that they're providing. So if they could send us.
Needs to go on the website.
Yes. Well, not, not that part yet, but for our review, please request that they, that they ship hard copies bound, like they have every other year for all council members review.
Okay. So I'll get 10 copies instead of five.
Whatever works for you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sony.
Yes.
Okay, so this will be on the agenda for March 1st? This will be on the agenda for March 1st?
First meeting in March. Is that March?
Because I don't think we can get that done by the 15th.
No, we don't want.
No. Yeah, it is March.
Okay, so let's move on to A, discussion, discussion possible action order of the May 7, 2022 general election for the purpose of voting on city council members for place one, three, and four for a full two-year term.
So the council has to approve it, huh?
No, you, you call the election.
I'm calling the election and I need a motion to hold the election.
I make a motion that we have, that we accept the general election on May 7, 2022 for the purpose of voting on city council members places one, three, four for a full two-year term.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to hold an election on May 7. Is there any discussion?
I think it's important that people just know, like, you don't have to belong to a certain district or a certain neighborhood to run for one of the spots. Like, you, you could be from wherever at in Martindale, as long as you're in the ETJ and you could say, oh.
City.
Yeah, in the city, in the city, sorry. You cannot, if you're in the ETJ, you have to be in the city limits of Martindale. But you could pick a place, pick any place and run for that place. You don't have to be in a certain neighborhood to run for a certain spot.
And where do we have these publicized, besides, I mean.
On the website.
And it's, it's posted in the post office, it's posted out in our, our posting box.
Should be other places we could do it.
Talk to your people, talk to your neighbors.
Yeah.
I have.
It's on Facebook, too.
No, we need official.
Okay, Mike, how do you vote?
Uh, yea.
Uh, Sam, how do you vote?
Yea.
And Sonia made the motion and Lisa seconded it. Jan, how do you vote? Okay, so the motion carries. Okay, we're going to move on to C, discussion possible action to accept the contract for election services between Caldwell County Election Administrative Office and the city of Martindale for the May 7, 2022 general election. And that contract is in your packet. Sylvia and I both went over this line by line. It has very little change from the one that we signed before with the county. This one just generalizes a few things, like it's, instead of saying the city of Martindale, it just says the city and a few other minor differences. Uh, we save a lot of money by contracting with the county. The school district isn't having an election this year. Um, so we talked to the county. They are having an election for two different propositions from the state. So they're already holding an election. They, so to add our election to the ballot will actually save us money.
And we only have one place to vote.
Yeah, now, all of 301 is, the, the whole city is in precinct 301. I've got a map on the wall out there, if anybody wants to take a look at it.
And I have two. Can we, do we need to have a motion before a discussion?
Yes. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I make a motion to accept the contract for election services between Caldwell County Election Administrative Office and the city of Martindale for the May 7, 2022 general election.
Thank you. Jan, second. Okay, do we have any more discussion?
Um, yes. First, first of all, just for the public's knowledge, um, when contracts are written specifically on this one in the very first line, where it says this contract between, by and between the city of Martindale, in parentheses, the city, a political, what that means is that through the rest of the contract, they're not going to write the city of Martindale. They're just going to write the city.
Right.
So that's, so that's one thing. And then second, is there a cost share? There we go, cost, Article 4, cost of services. The county shall remit payment directly to the vendor with pellets of, is this particular election similar to, say, something we had last year?
It's, they use the E S and S machines. So when they're saying vendor, uh, they're talking about contracting with E S and S to provide the ser, the technical services that they do.
I'm just always curious what we pay as a city for these elections that we have to have. But for the public's knowledge.
Four to $8,000.
And those numbers are not represented in this contract, correct?
Not specific numbers.
Okay.
As far as, uh, we will pay a per, a per, well, I don't know that it's actually a percent. How did she explain that?
It's a prorated amount.
It's a prorated amount.
Because it all depends how many they're going to bring. Right now, I think she told us she had, with us, it'll be four, right? I think for.
Or other, in this ballot, more the better, more the better dollar-wise.
Yes.
No more discussion for me.
We're thinking it'll be about $6,000 from what we could figure.
Does that count the, the judges that have to work?
Yeah.
So it should be less since we don't have to pay the, the other ones too, right?
The.
The one who went and sent all the judges and.
Oh, no, we only pay for the ones here. And only a portion of it.
We didn't have to pay for three or two.
No, because now all of Martindale is in precinct 301.
We did, and we're already saving just by changing.
Good point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Last time, those E S S machines, we had to pay fully for them when we ran our own election. And y'all are saying now we get to divide the cost of those out. So that'll make a big difference.
Great, yeah.
Excellent.
Thank you. I have no further discussion.
They call up and then they came.
Okay, um, we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Sam, what do you think?
No, it's less. It had been $10,000 in the back.
Yeah, this last one was very.
I, I agree.
Okay, Mike, how do you vote?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Uh, Sonia made the motion. Lisa, how do you vote?
Yea.
And Jan, and Jan seconded it. So the motion carries. Okay. We now come to D, discussion action, possible action. Uh, review of the submitted Parks Advisory Board Volunteer Applications for possible appointments for a two-year term. So in your, in your packet, there are one or two, there's Carol Devini and the other one is Anita Gonzalez. Are we considering Anita tonight? Okay.
So, um, Ms. Walker did resign.
Okay, we were making sure, we were making a few phone calls to make sure that there were two openings.
So there is two openings.
There is two openings and there are two applications. So actually Carol did put this in a couple of months ago. Well, it says Dan 21. And, um, um, we just hadn't brought it forward to the city council.
So I make a motion that we accept Carol Devini and Anita Gonzalez for the two spaces on the Parks Advisory Board Volunteer for applications for the appointment of a two-year term.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion?
Can I say Mr. Bennys again? Okay, yeah, Parks Advisors. I didn't, I didn't say where, where's indicated.
I agree.
Okay, hearing, no more discussion. Mike, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Sam?
Yes.
And Sonia? No, so, I'm sorry. Sonia seconded it. Lisa motion. Jan?
Aye.
Okay, and the motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to number E, discussion possible action on potential zoning map changes related to the mixed-use and commercial districts. Okay, Jared, I hope you're awake.
Yep, I'm, I'm still with you. Hopefully, as I'm driving through the fields of West Texas, I, I keep myself serviced for this conversation.
Are you driving?
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, just, just about hours worth of junk. Not too far away. Um, Adrian, do you want to go ahead and pull up the zoning map? If you go to the city's website and then how do I link, look up the zoning, building, zoning tab and what the zoning map?
I'm pulling it up right now.
Okay, let me know what's the plan.
It's the new map you added, right?
Uh, yeah, yeah, it's on the, it's on the zoning web page.
Yeah. I believe he's talking about this one. I know he's talking about zones, right?
Yeah, Sony.
I think he was asking you.
Is, okay, I have it open now.
You were.
All right, perfect. All right, so purpose of tonight's conversation is really spurred by a landowner, property owner who's interested in convert, who has initiated an application for a zoning change. who's interested in convert, who has initiated an application for a zoning change to transition from a mixed-use zone to a commercial zone located near the pack and sack at the intersection of 142 and Highway 80. And in previous, uh, workshops, the city council, planning zoning commission, has considered rezoning that area to a commercial zone on its own action. And what, what the, what I'd like to receive from the city council tonight is an indication of whether the city council wants to initiate that zoning change action for that area specifically at intersection 142 and Highway 80. Or if, if there's not a desire to do so, then we can proceed with that zoning change request for that single property owner.
So, Jared, I'll jump in on it real quick. I, I think if we're gonna word it tonight, if, if the council can, a zoning change needs to, needs to have its origins in planning and zoning. So if we're gonna, if we're gonna do that, the council need to, the vote would be to recommend to, uh, refer the issue to planning and zoning for consideration. We just come back the next meeting and discuss that.
Yeah, so the, the, if, if the council wanted to proceed down that path, our ordinance lays out that process where either the Planning and Zoning Commission or the city council can initiate that activity by directing the zoning administrator to prepare the documents required to, to pursue that zoning change. So, I'm not sure if that's the, I think at this stage, we can have that directive initiated, but that would not result in a zoning change at this point. You still have to go through the public hearing process, the notification process and all that.
So this is really for discussion only today?
Yeah, there, there can be no change, yeah. The documents can be drafted.
Right.
Could you, could I get clarity? Like, where exactly, like, what number on there are we talking about exactly?
All right, so in the, if you, if you look at the intersection of 142 and Highway 80, it's gonna be on the southeast corner directly across. It's a lot that is currently occupied by the Taco Feliz, uh, taco truck.
Uh-huh.
So that, that, the property owner of that location submitted a zoning change request to move to, to change their current zone from mixed-use to commercial with the intent to eventually get approval to put a drive-through restaurant at that location. Um, but, I have not yet accepted that application for a zoning change request because I did not, it's a thousand dollars application fee, not refundable to, to pursue that process. If the city council had, had already indicated that they'd be considering a zoning change in that area pursuant to what the application requested. If we're gonna do that change anyway, it would, it would sure be bad to take a thousand dollars from somebody.
Jared, I had a question about the current use of that Taco Feliz. I mean, it is multi-use, but they have been operating a commercial business in that location for a long time. Is that because it's not a permanent structure and that's how they've been able to do that?
Well, there are a lot of them that want to change.
The, the reason for changing it is in our zoning ordinance and our use table. If we want to pull up that reference, Adrian, you can start working on that too. Uh, it's gonna be under 155 dot 096. That's the use table for the different zoning districts. For a food truck, um, operation, basically, they have to get a, like a vendor's permit sort of thing. And they're allowed to, to operate that business and, so, I don't recall exactly all of them off the top of my head, but I know that mixed-use is one of them, so is commercial. For them to operate a, there's, we, in our current use table, we make a distinction between a restaurant dine-in facility and a restaurant with a drive-through facility. A restaurant that's a dine-in only is permitted under, in a mixed-use area. Think of the cafe downtown. However, a restaurant that operates a drive-through window is not permitted in a mixed-use zone. And so the, the procedure would be for them to be enabled to operate a drive-through would be to change from mixed-use to commercial. And then under the commercial zone, they're required to file a specific use permit in addition to that. So really, it comes down to whether the city council wants to consider just this one application or return to the conversation from a few months back, you know, over the summer, I think, in a workshop setting where we considered changing that entire area to a commercial zone. And then that, that property owner would not be out the thousand-dollar application fee.
Jared, what's the, the exact ordinance?
It's, uh, section 155 dot 096.
Just to let you know that the proprietor is, is right.
Yes.
Is that healthier?
Yes.
Jared, if any, Jared, this is Lisa. At any given point, if you permit me to weigh in, I would like to. If you would not like for me to, I will not.
Yeah, if you, if there's a question or, or something that I, I could be further clarified, feel free to weigh in.
I'm sorry, repeat that, please?
Yeah, feel free to weigh in.
It's this.
So, so this particular application is one of the ones that's on the list, the ones I discussed. And my wheels are turning. Give me just a moment. There's a quandary. And the quandary is that in commercial, this property would not be permitted to have any type, any type of short-term rental. If it were zoned commercial. In mixed-use, they are permitted to have short-term rental. However, a drive-through is not permitted. So I spoke with the proprietor. Javier, can you stand up and just introduce yourself by name? Javier Yamas, and he is the son of the original owner of Taco Feliz. Welcome. We're glad you're here. So I did a little bit of homework, just determining, knowing that this gentleman and his family, they've been working on planning on this for a long time. And they finally have gotten some drawings done. They're, they're ready to roll. They've put down their thousand-dollar. So I looked up in section or chapter 155 dot 040, which is the specific use permit. And the purpose, I'll just read this since I don't have it for, and if you wanna go to it, you can, but.
Zero, four, five.
For the purpose of a specific use permit is to allow the establishment of uses which may be suitable only in certain locations in a zoning district or only when subject to standards and conditions that assure compatibility with adjoining uses. Specific uses are generally compatible with permitted uses in a particular zone district. But they require individual review of the proposed location or design and the imposition of conditions in order to ensure the appropriateness of use in the particular location. Javier, how many years have, have you guys been there?
I'm sorry?
How many years have you guys been there?
About fifteen, a little more than fifteen years.
I'm thinking a little bit more, okay. So, in, in looking at, in looking at the whole picture, I, I looked at it as it's possible, yes, long-term, the city may, the council may decide we want to rezone that area. However, in the short-term, I believe, um, Jared can trump what I believe or what Mike believes. Um, I believe a specific use permit would enable that drive-through based on review of plans, which would go to our engineer to determine that it met all requirements. So that was what I wanted to, to weigh in with. Thank, thank you, Jared.
Yeah, so the specific use permit is still, will be required to operate the drive-through.
Even with the commercial?
Even in the commercial zone. So the, the specific use permit process is definitely gonna be required. However, the, the allowable uses as outlined in the mixed-use district section of the zoning ordinance, which calls in, which specifically references the use table on 096, the use table for our drive-through facilities are only allowable in commercial zones with a specific use permit. And so based on that use table, I don't think that we are able to without changing that zoning ordinance, issue a specific or approve a specific use permit in a mixed-use zone for a drive-through.
Jared, in your opinion, when the blank that is on the screen right, right now, uh, between restaurant, drive-through and MU, where it is blank, uh, in your opinion, what does that mean?
So it, it's, it's, I believe, defined at the top of that table.
Okay, I'd like to see that.
When, when it, when it's, when it's blank, I'm going off memory, but please feel free to read off in the room. When it's blank, it means it's not allowed. The P is permitted by right, S is permitted through a specific use application, blank is not permitted.
I think it's been through the board of adjustments.
Agreed. And, and I will just tell you and for the public to know that in, you wanna go to the, go down to the bottom of that use table? What is the date, date? Um, the first date that it was passed? Oh, 2008. 2008. I was on the council when this was created. And that particular area was zoned mixed-use because it looked exactly like it does right now. Can you go back to that zoning map in that area for us, please? So the, in the green area that's 73847, that's a Dollar General. The parcels, there are two houses. Then there is Taco Feliz, and then there is another house. And so that is the reason that that area was zoned mixed-use to accommodate. And then when you look across the street, as in across Highway 80, same, same, same situation. The R3, for all to know, R3, that is the Martindale Apartments. That is what is in R3.
That's the only R3, yeah.
So, so wanting there to be some congruency across Highway 80 giving those areas that are current, majority currently homes residential to give them the ability to do something different if they so chose with their own property that has Highway 80, 142 front-ish, you know? So I just wanted to let it be known, and that's why I was.
Question.
So, in, in looking at this, I, I can see merit in, in considering a change in zoning, uh, under chapter 211 of the local government code and under chapter 155 of our Code of Ordinances, there is a statutorily described for, it's called Board of Adjustments. And the Board of Adjustments is vested with authority to grant variances from, from the Code of Ordinances is allowable. So, one of the things to consider is if an out-and-out zoning change would potentially have unintended consequences. I don't, I don't have the allowable and non-allowable uses committed to memory and, and we could, we could engage in that exercise. But if, 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 if the goal is simply to consider allowing a drive-through rather than a wholesale change in zoning, which again, that, that may end up being the right thing, whatever you guys decide. But this council acting as the Board of Adjustments could approve allowing a variance on this mixed-use lot to specifically allow for a drive-through subject to a specific use permit being allowed. So, in other words, what happened, this council would convene as the Board of Adjustments and say, hey, we, we think that letting them have an exception to have a drive-through is good. Now, council, if you end up approving this specific use permit, they're off to the races. And that way, the mixed-use zoning remains, and there's just a, a, a limited scope carve-out to allow for the drive-through.
And that's the purpose of the specific use is to see if the actual location, if it works for that location.
Again, that may not be the right thing. The coun, the council may look at it and think that a change in zoning is the right thing to do.
You, well, that's what we're asking for, just for that property.
Just that property, right. The other point that I'd like to make up, make, and I'm certainly can be corrected, um, say, any of the residential houses that are in that mixed-use zone, if in fact, no, actually, I'm, I was gonna say, if in fact, something were to happen in the house and they had to rebuild because it's mixed-use, they still would be able to rebuild, correct? If, if it went, if the zone was changed to commercial and one of those residential houses, God forbid, were to burn, they would not be able to rebuild a residential house. It would have to be used as commercial. And there's a lot of residential houses in that space.
Do we have to ask, uh, all property owners? Don't, do they have to get an official letter? Or can we just go boom?
No, we cannot.
You cannot change zoning without, without going through.
And there's two public hearings.
Yeah.
But if we approve the variance, then we wouldn't have to go through all that?
Correct.
The process for, for having something flow through the Board of Adjustments is, is not as arduous.
Well, would, would there be a way, though, to just change it to commercial on the south side of that intersection, which currently has more commercial business? It has two homes, but we've seen recently that the home that was for sale next to Dollar General sold and came back on the market.
Are you saying two?
168, 28350 up to 27906, is that what you're talking about?
No, I'm saying on the south side, maybe make that commercial and keep that MU on the north side. Because you, that's all pretty much residential homes on that side. There's no commercial businesses on that.
Well, isn't there a tire business in the, in the gas company?
That's on the other side.
Oh, it's.
You, you, you could.
I don't, it's, oh, okay, the tire, isn't there a tire? It was further down, okay.
The tire business is not, is in.
It's further down now.
It's not in that view.
Oh, it's in commercial.
And it's in commercial.
It's already in commercial. And then so is, uh, the gas.
And so for whatever it is worth, the property that you're talking about in the last 10 days, I've had three, as of today, four phone calls about that property that is for sale.
Yeah, but they raised the price about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Well, that part is not my business. They just wanna know what can we do with the property.
Right.
Um, just me, like, as a council member, I would just like to say that I don't think, like, doing a whole change right now. change right now, all, all up along, changing it to commercial, you know, is just without us looking further into it because as Lisa said, there's, uh, property owners that could significantly be in, impacted if something happened to their property, um, in, you know, in an unforeseen disaster.
Can I make a suggestion? I know it's way ahead, but do we see a, a sketch drawing of that, of that development?
As soon as, yes, you can. And we, and we, and.
Maybe I mean for.
So I would not vote on it unless I could see something, I would like to see what kind of traffic flow they would have on a drive-through, et cetera. Cause we don't want it, uh, obstructing traffic on Lockhart or Highway.
Part of the review.
It looks like their property is big enough to sustain it.
In order, and, and part of the review, in order for this commission slash council to make either an approval, approval with conditions or denial, you will get all documentation. At this point, the, the application is not what is deemed complete. Even though, and let me be clear, even though I have received a site plan, some drawings, preliminary. The money has been paid, the application has been filled out. Once, I was again waiting for this meeting to see how, the temperature of how this would fly. Once at this point, if, if we say, you know, we might make a zoning change, but we're not going to do it right now and prevent this particular applicant from moving forward. Then at that point, I will send those site, uh, plans and drawings to our city engineer, who will then begin to correspond with the engineer that Javier has hired. And they will make certain, as part of our code, that all requirements for this are met. This, again, will be one of those deals where, um, our city engineer will come. They will have an opportunity to give a presentation. We will have opportunity to ask all the questions we want to know and then make a determination.
This, I feel like should be on the P and Z agenda. Which one?
Yes.
It will be.
Just about, yes, Jared?
Yeah, I, I, I listened to the conversation and I hopefully I have service again. Um, it, this, this, the specific application would be a planning and zoning commission meeting agenda item. But before we went down that path, I wanted to make sure that there wasn't already a, a desire by the city council to pursue a zoning change for that area already. But it sounds like that may not be the case. So then we would schedule it for a formal planning zoning commission review after the, you know, as Lisa said, the evaluation by the engineer. There have to be public notices put out, yard signs, letters, the whole shebang. Um, to handle that process. But before we accepted the check, cashed it and moved forward, um, I want to get a, get a sense of what the city council's thoughts were about a wholesale zoning change for that region of the city.
And for the record, the check has already been deposited.
Well, and in only like six months ago, when we had a workshop, the city council was wanting to change all of that commercial. So that, there was a good reason for wanting to see how the city's council felt about it.
And we, we didn't know the, we didn't know what the temperament was on current property owners, which I believe is important.
Be nice to.
Well, that, well, that, that process would take place through the public hearing process. So if, if there's a desire by city council to, to pursue that path, then we would still go through the, the same zoning change procedures in terms of yard signs, public notice, public hearing and all of that. It would just be council initiated versus an applicant of one property owner.
But like, we still, we would still have to go through all that even if we did, as, as a Board of Adjustments, just to approve a variance?
No.
So that's what I want. That's how I would like to proceed. Whenever we have the planning and zoning meeting, I would go to proceed with just approving a variance to specifically allow a drive-through with the approval of the specific use permit.
As long as all requirements are met.
Yes.
According to building standards.
Yes.
Thank you.
And then in the future.
Yes.
We can, we can reach out to the other property owners and see if they want to go commercial.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay.
I agree.
Good. Everybody good?
Yes.
Do we need a?
I might have missed it because I, because my, uh, section was bad, so. The, the discussion regarding variance, the discussion regarding variance. My, my understanding of, of variance had more to do with like setbacks and site design kind of stuff that are really there to accommodate where, where things are not feasible to, for a lay-down perspective. I.
I do not believe we need a variance. I believe we need a specific use permit to allow for a drive-through in the MU zone. As well as this particular project will also require a certificate of appropriateness for being in the scenic corridor. The certificate of appropriateness has to be approved before this specific use permit, but it can be done all at the same time.
How, how, how do you guys feel about Jared and me putting our heads together and coming up with the, the path of least resistance and presenting it for consideration at the next meeting?
My opinion is I've already done.
Yeah, I, I, I get it, I get it.
Yeah, but you, it, it says here that you cannot do a specific use for a multi-use property.
No, it says you can't have a drive-through.
Right.
But via a specific use permit in the very first chapter or the very first, uh, chapter 155 dot 040, A, when it describes the purpose, to me, it clearly fits this situation.
Yeah, I think, I think what Kent was saying would make sense. Let, let, let me him, me and him talk about it. There may be an option to maybe add a specific use permit qualifier on the use table under mixed-use. And that would get us to that path and maybe that change would not be as difficult to overcome, but.
This is one, what about like, and, and I mean, I'm just saying, I'm just throwing it out there. But what about under mixed-use for restaurant, drive-through? Because we would still have to, we, we, we would still have to approve it. What about if we just put a P there and we allowed it?
Well, we don't.
But that, but that, but that's, that's, so that, that would be a, a change to the, to the zoning code, which, I mean.
Either way.
There's, there's, there's no real easy fix to this, but I mean, what, what we're looking at is a scenario where we say, you, you, you have a mixed-use property. You can run a restaurant, but you, you, you can't technically have, have a drive-through. And so we're, we're balancing here when to, when to alter the, the zoning code or wholesale change zoning versus seeing, seeing if the city can, can fit in a reasonable change. And, and Jared's right, if you look at 155042, which sets forth the variance process, we got, we've got to look at that. I mean, the question is going to be, is, is strict enforcement of, of the Code of Ordinances resulting in an unnecessary hardship? In other words, saying, we realize you can, you, you can, you can run a restaurant, but we've got this carve-out again. There's, in, any way that you look at addressing this issue, it's not, it's not a simple, one move, easy fix. So I think we need to put our heads together and, and come up with what would be the simplest fix that would involve the, the least amount of drastic change to the city's code.
And the, and what Ken was describing is, you know, to not just do it across the board.
Yeah.
And for it to be specific to this location. Because, for example, we've got mixed-use up and down Main Street. There are, there are houses that are in between houses that are in MU, and if we do that, it means they can make a frickin' drive-through around their house.
Yeah, if you don't.
Impact other people and that would not be appropriate for that location. This location, it's appropriate.
And also we setting a precedent here.
No.
No.
That, that, that does not set a precedent. And that, i- i- it is, the Board of Adjustments exists to provide the opportunity for variances from the Code of Ordinances in certain situations. But what, one, the allowance of one variance does not operate to create an exception or a waiver.
So what do we need to do now?
Well, if I may, Javier, if you would stand, please. And you, you are welcome to decline the answering this question. You do not have to answer it. We have already determined we're going to set a meeting on the 22nd of February. Your project is one of the many that I was planning to hopefully get there. Based on the site plans that are drawn thus far. Did talk to your engineer at Boilink last week, so I believe he's making some modifications. Do you think by the 22nd, I'm going to back it up, by the Thursday before the 22nd, I don't have a calendar in front of me, that all of your documentation would be ready? Do you think? You can decline or you can answer?
That's the 17.
17. So 17 days, you think in 17 days, I mean, you guys work fast already. Okay, decline, decline. So he doesn't know, so it may not.
So he doesn't have to decline. He could just say he's gonna try his best to get it in by that time.
To get, to get it.
And you don't have to decline. You just try your best. Yeah, that's all you have to do, so you don't have to say no. You're just gonna try to get it all done.
I, I didn't want to lock him down, but that makes sense.
Yes, so, uh-huh, because it just like puts added pressure that, you know.
Always have another planning zone.
Yeah.
And, and there's another thing that we can always do. If it is on the agenda and it was posted in the paper and we have a public hearing and your project is on it, yet you're not ready, we as P and Z can say, scratch this item. We're going to table this item and do it later.
Um, and so we're. Jared's gonna meet.
Jer- Jared, Jared will meet and, and just, so when there is a conflict between our Code of Ordinances and state law, state law law discontrol, our, our Code of Ordinances does be, does read a bit more restrictively, but, but under, under the local government code, uh, Board of Adjustments is authorized to grant variances if the variance is not contrary to public interest due to special conditions. Literal enforcement would result in unnecessary hardship and so that the spirit of the ordinance is observed and substantial justice is done. So we don't quite capture all of that more broad and encompassing language in our Code of Ordinances, but it still does apply to any decision that would be made.
So in other words, we're not going to make any decisions tonight.
And to remember when I gave my report, if I am, um, correct in that chapter 154 dot 008, when a variance is being reviewed, there is no public hearing. It can be, um, approved.
By the Board of Adjustments, but at, at a public meeting.
Correct.
Yeah.
But there's no letters, there's no public hearing.
Right.
It's just a do.
Then, then the specific use permit would.
Would require a public hearing and the certificate of appropriateness also requires a public hearing.
But it's not something we're going to do tonight.
Yeah.
No, but everybody understanding the process.
I mean, if, if someone wants to make a motion, I think it would be a motion that Jared and I work together to lay out this form of plan and put it back.
I make a motion that Jared Ennible and our attorney work together to make a plan of action and give them full authority to do so.
Based on this specific.
Yes.
Project.
Based on this specific project pertaining to the zoning map changes related to the mixed-use and commercial districts.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
It's necessary, we need a motion. I don't think it's necessary, we need a motion.
He said, they said, to make one.
You said if you.
Yeah.
But, but, yeah, you.
Okay, so I have a motion, a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Oh, can I just ask one last, last question? Yeah, the, the discussion that I was concerned about, we have talked about a site plan. We talked about the in, entrances to the, uh, drive-up, perhaps where they come and go. Do we have to refer or consult with text doc in order if they happen to have a drive-in coming out onto the highway?
If they had Highway 80 frontage, the answer would be yes.
Okay.
But because their frontage is Lockhart Street.
Oh, so they're going to be coming in and out on Lockhart?
That is their frontage.
I, I see.
Where that property is, they don't have frontage to hold it. Good question.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all I, I was asking, so I say yes on letting them come up with a plan.
Okay, so I have a motion in a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the motion here. Okay, we have one more item and that is the holiday schedule. That is the last thing in your packet for the full-time workers, is that correct? Oh, is. To all, part-time and full-time? Yeah, that's true.
With pay, Mike.
Oh, no.
I have, with the part-time, let me clarify something. I think you told me that the part-time only get the holiday if that's the day they're working. So I like if Carmen works Monday and Tuesday and.
The holiday is Monday.
And the holiday is Monday, then she would get paid for it. But Adrian works Wednesday and Thursday, he would not get the holiday.
Correct.
Cause he's, that's not his normal day to work.
Correct. Maybe that's his normal day, but the holiday doesn't fall on his workday.
Okay, so there's really only two full-time, uh, workers right now. And even when we get.
Only one.
Well, only one, that's true, only one. Cause Tommy, Tommy Chief Ward's on.
He's there, yes.
So we have this many holidays and we've already spent two of them.
I, I actually went through the entire calendar and have, um, a couple of things I'd like to just make aware of. If I may, before we have a motion, because I don't think what I have to say is going to change, but, um, on February 22nd, which is President's Day, is the day. Hold on a second, February 21st. That is the day before the meeting that we just set on the 22nd. So my question would, or my statement would be, let's all be prepared, you know, to get our work done the previous week since nobody would be here on Monday.
Yeah.
Cause sometimes that's messed up before. And then the other one is November 10th. Um, what was?
That's a Thursday.
Yes, ma'am, let me see. I want to circle that one, but let me look.
I don't think we should have veterans stay off unless you're a veteran.
Okay, so this was, this was my reasoning for circling. That week on the 8th is Election Day. So will this facility on a, in years past, when elections are set up and held here?
No, they won't be held here.
They will not?
No, because the, uh, well, they have had non-city elections here, I realize that. But she's going to be using that Three Rivers Church even for like the primaries that are coming up, um, March, I forget when the primary is.
That's all, that's all I wanted to know.
And the May election, they're both going to be down at the church.
That's all I wanted to know. So I make a motion that we approve the 2022 holiday schedule. That's all I wanted to know, so I make a motion that we approve the two thousand and twenty-two holiday schedule as presented.
A second.
I think we should change that floating holiday to five day. So, I don't want to get paid. Every day's a holiday for me.
I did. So, I, this, I just have a question, on April fourteenth, it says Good Friday, but the day's on a Thursday.
Yeah, that's because we're not.
Because we're closed on Friday. I'm not a big fan of that either, but.
Well, you don't have to, go on the holidays if you don't agree with them. That's why we're discussing here.
So, um, okay, so holiday is Good Friday, but y'all are, the city is observing Good Friday on Thursday.
Correct.
Same thing done at Christmas.
Since we're closed on Friday already, you wouldn't have to approve that holiday if you don't think it's legitimate.
The Christmas is going to be, they're going to observe it on the twenty sixth.
The calendar's up there.
We're going to observe Christmas Eve on the twenty second.
Okay.
And this is, I, I think, important to look at, we have limited, um, you know, people want to bring applications and bring, I'm so sorry, offices closing Friday.
This is a lot of holidays.
And it's.
It's been since I've been here.
The same thing that it's always been.
Well, we just added the Easter.
Does not.
It's been there for four years.
Four years.
I mean, the Easter, you mean, the Good Friday.
I mean, since we're closed on Friday already, it seems like a lot of holidays.
Sixteen, count them.
Uh, this is December.
They wanted to add Columbus Day. So it's not that many, but since, some, it's on the weekends.
I would like to be open five days a week.
Ding ding ding.
I've looked at the budget on that, it would cost about seven thousand dollars for a year to be open on Friday.
Really?
I, I personally.
Because we'd have to pay a utility clerk to be here on Friday. I think it would be better for the public to be open five days.
Well, that should be another agenda item then.
Yes.
I made a motion.
Just a, just a quick, quick comment, if, if you're looking at removing the Good Friday date, um, because it falls on, on a day that we're closed, could also incorporate the, the new federal holiday of Juneteenth on this, uh, calendar. I'm not sure what day that, that would fall on, I haven't looked at the calendar, but.
If you're going to do that, we might as well do the, the six days. Let's, uh, yeah, let's just, uh, let's just leave it, I, I say let's leave it as, as is. Because it, we need input from the employees for this.
I want to make a motion to approve the two thousand and twenty-two holiday schedule.
We already.
Already did.
And we already seconded.
Okay, let's go.
Is there any more discussion?
Thank you for your help, is there any more discussion? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, is there anything else to add to the upcoming, how long's my last page?
Yes.
You did say the audit, right, the audit is one, the audit.
Yeah, that needs to be added.
Yes, hey, Jared, how's?
And what was that other thing that you were talking about?
Jerry, uh, we're talking about that draft permit from, from Walton Group to, uh, T C Q. As an agenda for this.
Yeah.
Is he there, losing? Hello?
Yeah, I think he had to go. Jared, you there?
Yeah.
You there?
Yep, that, yep, I, I agree, we, we talked about that for the.
Yeah.
What, you broke up?
What, what, you tell us what needs to be added.
I'm just saying, but, but, but the public hearing is the twenty eighth of February. Whatever you said, he said he agreed.
Yes, so you need to, you.
You want to make.
I wrote it down somewhere.
Yeah, I wrote it down, the status of the T C E U permit.
Doesn't have anything to do with the county.
I know, I know, I'm just saying, with the twenty, you're going to do it for the twenty second.
You need to leave it.
No, this will be a regular, won't this just be a regular.
Regular one is the fifteenth.
Uh, okay, Edward, of February? Correct?
Yeah, yeah, that, that sounds good to me.
Edward, okay, the, February fifteenth, okay.
And we'll have to approve the audit on March first, is what we decided, and, um, should we set a date for a, a workshop for working on the ordinances? We've been talking about that, we haven't gotten back to that.
We said that we would do that whenever we hired the person.
Yeah.
That was going to be.
Building code guy.
So whenever we get that person, that's what we'll do.
Yeah.
It's very important that whoever's in that spot is also in those conversations.
Yeah.
All right.
Let them get, well.
Which will be this month, they should be hired, according to Jared, like, next week or the week after, so. It's not a month-long delay or whatever, it's just a matter of filling that spot.
Did we decide on a day for the citywide cleanup?
No, we have not.
But in our next times' agenda, we usually do it in the paper. If I may, Mayor.
Yes.
I, um, left out one, uh, what I consider good news, item on my report, and that is the last time we had a P and Z meeting where we approved the subdivision plat in Westridge Lot thirty-seven to become Lot thirty-seven A, B, and C. Today, I received the milars. Um, I haven't opened this yet to ensure that that one little condition was fixed, but it is ready for signature, and I will personally take this to, um, the county to be recorded and brought back for the property owner to pick up and then pay, reimburse the filing fee, to the city to get the blocks, so that's a good thing.
And there, I would like, just to, uh, to see, just like you read the proclamation today, you could also do on recognizing Black History Month.
Is that February?
Yes.
Okay, anything else?
Did we decide on the speed bumps or the golf carts or?
Uh, we're going to talk about them.
Yeah, I haven't done my homework yet.
Thank you.
Okay, can I, since you're drunk?
I make a motion we adjourn this meeting at nine thirty P M.
I thought it was ten o'clock. I was like, I was going to sleep.
I'm here in ten.
It's late, I need to get home.
Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Yay, it's nine thirty.